It was, uh, you said that we were up three hundred thousand.
A month?
Yeah, it's been a month.
Yeah, I agree. Yeah, I, 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 oh, two words of this. I'll do that.
Are you okay? Can you hear me? Really?
Cut this off. Simon. We've got two minutes. Signing.
Yeah.
Okay. Hi, April. Very nice yesterday. Beautiful building.
They're good on the front page, too. Very nice.
I'm gonna ask for your autograph after the meeting here. Did Raymond take that picture? No, Raymond didn't take that. Hello, ladies.
It stopped working. It had wandered away.
I come in a car lot. Fall back. He opened up his pocket. He had all these watches. Like a designer watches. They're all vapers.
Yeah.
But I put it on. And stopped. And I called him on the phone. He gave me his number. I say, hey. Only he said, yeah, it's a stopwatch.
Out of here.
Okay. Got it. Do you? Let just start. Okay. Okay, could we all please stand for the pledge? I pledge allegiance to the flag, the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. If you remain standing for the Lord's Prayer, our Father who art in heaven, thou wilt be thy name. Thy kingdom come, thy will be done, on earth as it is in heaven. Give us this day our daily bread, and forgive us our trespasses, as we forgive those who trespass against us, and lead us not into temptation, but deliver us from evil. Amen. Okay, welcome, everyone. Uh, we will hold our next public workshop here on Tuesday, October 7th at ten thirty a.m. And our next regular public meeting will be held here on Wednesday, October 8th at ten thirty a.m. Madam Clerk?
Sir Bernard?
Here.
Mister Malloy?
Here.
Mister Hernandez?
Here.
Item number one is to dispense with reading the minutes of the workshop session dated September twenty-third, twenty-twenty-five, and the regular meeting dated September twenty-fourth, twenty-twenty-five, and accept and approve the video recordings of both meetings as the official meeting minutes.
Motion to approve?
No, second that.
Mister Bernard?
Yes.
Mister Malloy?
Yes.
Mister Hernandez?
Yes.
Item number two is to approve the bills.
Motion to approve?
Second.
Mister Bernard?
Yes.
Mister Malloy?
Yes.
Mister Hernandez?
Yes.
Item number three is to transfer monies.
Motion to approve?
Second.
Mister Bernard?
Yes.
Mister Malloy?
Yes.
Mister Hernandez?
Yes.
Item number four is to approve additional appropriations.
Motion to approve?
I second the motion.
Mister Bernard?
Yes.
Mister Malloy?
Yes.
Mister Hernandez?
Yes.
Item number five is to approve transfer of appropriations.
Motion to approve?
Second.
Mister Bernard?
Yes.
Mister Malloy?
Yes.
Mister Hernandez?
Yes.
Item number six is to notify the Ohio Department of Liquor Control that a public hearing is not requested for their liquor permit application is listed. This is a new class D two, D one, Ohio Springs, Inc., Sheets, in Weathersfield Township.
Motion to approve?
Second.
Mister Bernard?
Yes.
Mister Malloy?
Yes.
Mister Hernandez?
Yes.
Item number seven is to authorize an extension of time for all subaward grant agreements entered into by and between the Board of Trumbull County Commissioners and various Trumbull County township, cities, villages, nonprofits, and other eligible entities funded through the American Rescue Plan Act of twenty-twenty-one Coronavirus Local Fiscal Recovery Fund. The extension of time allows each subawardee to complete their respective projects if necessary within the next year. The new deadline for completion of all work and submission of required paperwork as detailed in the original grant agreement with the Board of Commissioners is October first, twenty-twenty-six. Special note, all original agreement terms and conditions remain applicable apart from the new deadline.
Motion to approve?
I'll second.
Mister Bernard?
Yes.
Mister Malloy?
Yes.
Mister Hernandez?
Yes.
Item number eight is to approve the submitted satisfaction of mortgage um, with instrument numbers listed for Robert K. Spawn and Joreen L. Spawn, who were assisted through the Trumbull County's home program in two thousand fifteen. The home mortgage was for a ten-year declining term. Mister and Mrs. Spawn have satisfied all terms and conditions of said mortgage.
Motion to approve?
Second motion.
Mister Malloy?
Yes.
Mister Bernard?
Yes.
Mister Hernandez?
Yes.
Item number nine is to concur with the county engineer to grant the right-of-way permits requested by the company and resident as listed, Omni Fiber LLC, and Peter Mamonas.
Motion to approve?
Second motion.
Mister Malloy?
Yes.
Mister Bernard?
Yes.
Mister Hernandez?
Yes.
Item number ten is to concur with the county engineer to grant the special annual supplier fleet permits requested by the companies listed, Lake Erie Golf Cars LLC, and Gibbs Construction, Inc.
Motion approved.
Second motion.
Mister Malloy?
Yes.
Mister Bernard?
Yes.
Mister Hernandez?
Yes.
Item number eleven is to receive and place on file the monthly activities report for the Trumbull County Dog Kennel for the month of August, twenty-twenty-five.
Motion to approve?
Second motion.
Mister Malloy?
Yes.
Mister Bernard?
Yes.
Mister Hernandez?
Yes.
Item number twelve is to receive and place on file the monthly financial reports for the Trumbull County Tourism Bureau for the months of July and August, twenty-twenty-five.
Motion approved?
Second motion.
Mister Malloy?
Yes.
Mister Bernard?
Yes.
Mister Hernandez?
Yes.
Item number thirteen is to receive and place on file the operating and financial report for the Trumbull County Transit through the month of August thirty-first, twenty-twenty-five.
Motion approved?
Second motion.
Mister Malloy?
Yes.
Mister Bernard?
Yes.
Mister Hernandez?
Yes.
Item fourteen is to amend the Trumbull County Transit procurement policy with recommendations per the results of the Ohio Department of Transportation, fifty-three-ten Transportation Technical Review, dated August twenty-second, twenty-twenty-five. Amendments are necessary to update the previous procurement policy that was outdated per ODOT.
Motion to approve?
Second motion.
Mister Malloy?
Yes.
Mister Bernard?
Yes.
Mister Hernandez?
Yes.
Item fifteen is to authorize Richard Hernandez, President of the Board of Commissioners, to sign and accept for use substantial completion the Brookfield Wastewater Treatment Plant Improvements Project number two dash S dash thirteen, located in Brookfield Township, Trumbull County Combined Sewer District.
Motion to approve?
Second motion.
Mister Malloy?
Yes.
Mister Bernard?
Yes.
Mister Hernandez?
Yes.
Item sixteen is to acknowledge the receipt of fifty-three thousand, three hundred seventy-five dollars from Amazon, Inc., to pay the sanitary sewer tap-in fees and health department fees associated with the connections for twenty-seven properties along Perkins Jones Road in Bezetta Township. Amazon, Inc., is privately extending the sewer along Perkins Jones Road as part of the Trumbull County Project number two dash S dash twenty-four. Funds have been deposited in the Trumbull County Combined Sewer District Fund number six zero two, and notifications will also be mailed to the affected property owners.
Motion to approve?
Second.
Mister Bernard?
Yes.
Mister Malloy?
Yes.
Mister Hernandez?
Yes.
Item seventeen is to authorize Daryl Donegan, Facilities Administrator, to decommission slash scrap the vehicles listed to Metallica of Youngstown. The vehicles listed are unfit for use due to serious disrepair and damage.
Motion to approve?
Second.
Mister Bernard?
Yes.
Mister Malloy?
Yes.
Mister Hernandez?
Yes.
Item eighteen is to approve state slash county opioid funds be utilized for the following services and necessary equipment in the total amount of seven hundred eighty-one thousand dollars as listed, utilizing fund zero seven nine.
Motion to approve?
I'll second that.
Mister Bernard?
Yes.
Mister Malloy?
Yes.
Mister Hernandez?
Yes. Okay. That was probably one of the shortest agendas that we've had.
That was a record in my, I mean, two and a half years.
Prior to going to executive session, which we have today, we are gonna move to public comment. So we don't have to have you sitting here all day while we're in executive session. April, would you like to come up and say a few words? We, we attended the Coleman um, Center um, Health, Mental Health Center there yesterday, and that was a wonderful turnout. And I wanna thank you for putting that together.
Thank you. April Caraway, um, Trumbull County Mental Health and Recovery Board. Um, so for those who don't know, maybe check out the newspaper today. Our board, along with um, Coleman Health Services, with the help of a lot of our State Department's funding and community development block grant funding, we broke, did a ribbon cutting for a crisis center that will be twenty-four-seven for people in a behavioral health crisis. And on the other side of the facility, there'll be supportive housing for six female head of household families and two single female apartments. And the housing is for people who are homeless, who need help getting to that next level in their lives, get a job, get an apartment, you know, get their medication if they have mental health needs or physical needs and so forth. And so um, we have a meeting, we're still meeting with the contractor and everyone. We don't have an occupancy permit yet. We um, expect to get it early November. But we wanted to do the ribbon cutting first because some state folks, this was the only day they could come. And we wanna make sure that the public got a chance to see it before we move families in, because then there'll be some privacy issues that we didn't, you know, wanna have to mess with. Um, so we've been communicating with the, you know, Warren Police Department and other departments that this is happening. And hopefully, you know, as we get up and running, if someone's in a crisis, they can be brought there instead of taking the emergency department. So our partnerships continue with emergency rooms and hospitals and so forth for people with mental health issues. But this is just one more piece of the puzzle. We won't be twenty-four-seven right away. Um, we're really struggling to get staff who wanna work nights and weekends. So we will build up to that as we can hire staff. But it is an exciting project, and I appreciate the commissioners being there yesterday and for your support.
Yeah, so April, thank you. And I, I think also uh, a note to mention, too, that it's open to Trumbull and Mahoning, I believe.
Yeah, um contiguous counties, so if Ashdabula has a need, um, they'll be coming down as well. And, you know, I anticipate filling up the supportive housing very, very quickly. We had a meeting this past Monday. We talked about six hu- sixty-five homeless individuals, um, and some with multiple kids. So we're still have a crisis here with families living in cars. And I wanna thank um, the commissioners for the opiate funding today. Um, we had two grants that ran out yesterday, the Workforce Development Grant of five hundred thousand dollars. And we really um, as a board, support people in recovery to get a job, contribute back to society, work their program. Um, we see a lot of relabs when someone doesn't have something to do. So work is very important. And this funding will help us continue that with Flying High, and also getting people to work. The fifty thousand for transportation will help people get there. And there are a couple other items on the agenda that will benefit. Um, law enforcement, you know, have using scanners to detect fentanyl, car fentanyl and other dangerous things will help keep our officers safe. So thank you for, for that funding.
Thank you, April. And I, and I speak for both Commissioner Bernard and I myself, who were there to view the building, that it's beautiful. I mean, it, it, they did, whoever did that did a wonderful job to the building.
Jay Herbert Construction, lowest and best.
Okay. Give them a plug. But um, thank you for what you do, and we appreciate the service and it much needed in, in this area.
Thank you so much.
For sure. Thank you. Thank you, April. Okay, so we're still under public comment. Um, if you would come to the podium, please.
We had a um, uh, the Fair Board had their elections, the Fair Board Membership uh, re-elected all the people that were up, so we have the same board as we did last year with one new addition. There's a, they added one new member to replace Jack, who passed away. Um, but they had their elections, too. Barry Bound will be Fair Board President again. So congratulations to him and the whole staff. They've done a fantastic job out there over the last year and a half.
Yes, congratulations, Barry. Yes, I did see that. Thank you, Commissioner. Okay, so we're still under public comment?
Good morning, Commissioners.
Good morning.
Um, I'm Steve Cregger, uh, Fire Chief of Bristol Township. Uh, also a member of the Trumbull County Fire Chiefs Association. I'm on the board for the EMA. I'm here today representing the Fire Chiefs Association. And uh, I've been directed to address our concerns with the Emergency Operations Center, uh, or the current EMA office, and uh, its ability to function as an EOC as needed. If you remember during COVID, uh, there were about twenty fire chiefs there every day, issuing much-needed PPE and other items throughout the county. Uh, and we used the, the, the office to procure that, uh, those items. And also, we used the Bay Area's to uh, distribute that item, those items. And uh, every day we had uh, I mean, thousands of uh, PPE going in and out of that, that structure. Um, it's, it's very vital to that, that type of operation. If something would happen now, we could not function. We would have to find another building somewhere else, uh, move the, the entire EOC. Um, uh, and John, Director Hickey's done an amazing job um, uh, setting that up. Uh, and it, it functioned flawlessly during COVID. Uh, so, again, we were uh, reluctant to, uh, you know, put the corner there, but we understood the, the urgency, uh, and, and, and he has to have an office and somewhere to go. So we, you know, okay, it's temporary, um, but this is beyond temporary. And we, we are concerned that if something major did happen in the county, we would uh, we would definitely be uh, uh, scraping to find somewhere to, to operate out of.
Okay, well, um, Chief, and we did, uh, we know the Commissioner Malloy attended the meeting at EMA, and we did discuss this yesterday. And we um, we know that there are um, monies available, some ARPA monies that we can utilize. We do have a situation with the sheriff uh, to, you know, to make sure that we can properly move vehicles in a facility, you know, for where we wanna move the EMA. And I'm just speaking on behalf of myself right now, not the commissioners. But um, please note that we absolutely um, are adamant about moving EMA and utilizing those dollars uh, that are available to do that. Um, and, you know, we have discussed this, and we know that, you know, time is of the essence. Um, and we will move forward. You know, I know you've been patient. I know Mister Hickey's been patient. Um, but um, we are taking this under advisory and definitely going to be making decisions uh, to, to move this, this forward.
I know the Fire Chiefs and uh, out of the board, EMA board, we do, we do expect to hear from something soon, so, thank you.
Well, if I may comment, you know, we're in a process, and, and I've, I've had several conversations with Director Hickey, and he, he knows where we're at, okay? He knows that uh, you know, we're trying to secure some, some additional funds to, to move them. And um, we hired a grant consultant, a grant writing, and they're in the process of trying to find us some funds. In fact, uh, they were gonna be at our meeting yesterday, but due to scheduling, they weren't there. But they did notify at least me that uh, at our next meeting, they're gonna come in and they're gonna discuss where they're at as far as securing some funds. So we are moving ahead, okay? And, and we appreciate, you know, your patience, but, you know, um, you did receive a new six hundred thousand dollar command post, so, you know, that would help out in case something happened. And, and we're sure you have a hazmat vehicle, and that's, that's always equipped and ready to go. So, you know, I, I, I mean, we just have to have some patience so we're, we can find the funds to move them, okay? But, but we are working towards that, okay? And Director Hickey knows that. I've told him that in several occasions, okay? But we're just trying to do it the right way and, and not put any additional taxes on the, on the taxpayers.
And, and we understand and appreciate that. Uh, I guess the Fire Chiefs' view is that, you know, we, we have a building. We know it works. We know it functions. If something would happen, we'd love to be working out of there. Um, so, you know, in the fire service, we always, you never know what's gonna happen.
Absolutely.
Everything changes. Uh, so it's, it's always our plan and our, you know, vision to be prepared for that to happen. And right now, you know, as a Chiefs Association, uh, we don't, we don't feel like we're prepared.
Why is that?
Because we don't have anywhere to operate out of. If we had to distribute all that PPE again on a daily basis for several months like we did, we have nowhere to, to run that out of. So that, that's our concern. Um, you know, we have all the computers, all the phones, everything, because we were on the, uh, uh, daily, we were trying to find and procure gloves, gowns, masks, everything, you know, for the county, and we distributed it countywide. Uh, that take, that took, again, almost twenty people every day uh, to, to facilitate that program. Um, and, and weren't in there, you know, we don't feel like we, we have anywhere we can operate out of, so.
Uh, if I may add to, um, Sheriff is here, and I know the sheriff was gonna speak with uh, Trumbull County Engineer concerning some um, alternative locations for, you know, the vehicles and the boat. And um, uh, you know, we, we can, I, I guess Sheriff, y- you can answer to that. But uh, it's adamant that we get that process done, moved, uh, and, you know, in a location that's secure, too. So we're, we're working on, you know, working with the sheriff, working with the engineer, and trying to come up with an adequate, you know, adequate space that's secure so that we can make that move. And um, Commissioner Bernard and I, and I know Commissioner Malloy, we're all on the same page with it. Um, you know, patience is a virtue, but I know that, you know, you've been patient. And um, we, you know, we're, we're, we're looking at the, the money aspect of it. Where to garner these monies? We believe that we have enough for the move. We're not so sure about um, you know, what we're gonna do with the vehicles for the sheriff. So uh, that may entail, you know, a little bit more money. I don't think it's gonna entail, you know, what we thought it would. So I think it's moving in the right direction, and we had a pretty lengthy discussion concerning it uh, at yesterday's workshop. So um, Commissioner, you would agree, we, we wanna see the move. I mean, absolutely.
And we're definitely moving ahead. We're just trying to do it the right way and, and the least expensive way, okay? But, you know, we are moving ahead. You know, we're trying, you know, we've written letters to our, our uh, federal legislators, trying to get them to okay that. We heard that we, we're gonna get that answer back in September. Well, now this is October first. So, you know what? We wanna move just as quickly as you wanna move. But we wanna do it the right way and the least expensive way. But we are moving ahead. And, and I told Director Hickey that, you know, several times, that he knows that, that, where I'm at on that.
Appreciate it.
Yep.
I guess if I can speak just for a second, too, I'm, we need a Plan B if Plan A doesn't work. If we can't use the ARPA funds, which I believe we can, we need a Plan B quick. I don't want these guys back next month, or the month after, or the next plane crash, or the next uh, catastrophe that we have, or the next hazmat incident that we have. The guys are held up because they can't get their equipment. They, this is their place. I mean, they, they, we take pride in having one of the best EMA agencies, one of the best hazmat. I mean, these guys are prepared. They had a class the other night for mass casualty with a full house. Um, they're training these people each and every day. And between the smells and the coroner's office and the equipment stuff, we need to do something. I was ready to, you know, I'm ready to take a note out tomorrow, take a loan out tomorrow, whatever we gotta do to make this stuff happen with the coroner and with the EMA and with the sheriff. I, I, I will be patient a little bit longer. But again, my patience is starting to run a little thin, too, of waiting, waiting, waiting for the government, waiting for grants, waiting for things that I think.
Commissioner, here's the problem.
Didn't have those options, we'd still have to act.
The issue is, we don't even know where property taxes are gonna end up going to. We're gonna have an issue there, but.
Whole world's gonna have that issue. Every county in, in Ohio, every township in Ohio is gonna have that issue. They're gonna work through it somehow. I can't say, are we not gonna move anybody?
I just don't wanna put the county in a position.
It's too bad you didn't have that speed when you had thirty-eight million dollars, Commissioner. If I'd have had that thirty-eight million, they'd have been moved.
And I, and I would concur with you that we, we need to get this done. But, you know, we, there's a lot of what-ifs. And, I mean, I'm reading that we could possibly lose property taxes, which are gonna be.
That would be eight million dollars to the county. That's quarter percent sales tax at that time, if we had to do it.
I understand.
Well, we're moving ahead, just.
Be patient with us. Yes, sir, Chief.
Kevin Carey, I'm Nick, Trumbull County Hazmat Chief. Um, I appreciate Commissioner Malloy, you come into the meeting the other day. It was very respectful. Um, I wanna speak just quickly. I understand you're moving forward. Um, I wanna commend you, uh, Commissioner Hernandez, I believe it was you commented in yesterday's workshop, I was listening, how quickly they reacted to the smell in this building and shut the smell down. Shut the building down because of the smell. EMA's dealing with the smell every day. We go home from meetings and trainings and smell. Um, our chairman of the board, when we had the meet, sorry, Commissioner Malloy, went home and he, he could smell it. Our equipment is, our trucks are ready to go. Everything's stacked. We've come into situations after the unfortunate plane crash, we have to restock our stuff. We're split up between the two buildings. And to restock our trucks after the plane crash, I had to have someone help me and escort me into the building because coroner's office was doing their job the next morning and saying, what? It's not safe. It's not secure. And I just, I understand you're trying to move forward. I agree with Commissioner Malloy. If the ARPA funds aren't available, we need a Plan B. Get on board, and I, and I just respect the request. Don't kick this can down the road like we have the Dog Pound and nine-one-one previously.
Well, i- i- it's my understanding that I, I, I guess I'm kinda confused that the smell was taken care of because uh, uh, we had a company that came in there and did some ventilation. And the last I knew that there was no longer any smell there. So that's, that's kinda news to me.
Smell. Um, we had class. We had a class last week, a four-day class in there, hosted by Director Hickey. We had instructors from out of state. We had students from out of state. And Director Hickey went down on a Sunday before class started to start, get the room set up. And because of the smell in our part of the building, he had the bay doors open and the other doors open for over four hours Sunday. We started the class with the bay door open to help with the smell.
Well, maybe we need to get in contact with that company then, because I was under the impression there wasn't a smell.
You lock the door on Monday morning, sir, and you, you can smell. Hmm. For those who've been around it, it's a very definite smell. You know when you come through the door.
April, when we're on the subject of ARPA, and I, I'm not sure, I don't mean to put you on the spot on this, but um, we have over, I think, just, just over three hundred thousand dollars in ARPA money still available at EMA. Do you believe that that could possibly be utilized for this transition, this move?
Yeah, she's not involved.
But you're with.
Doesn't make sense.
Ohio One or.
That has nothing to do with ARPA. ARPA's federal.
Oh, I'm sorry. That's opioid. That's right. You're, you're opioid. Yep. Chief, thank you for your, your comments, but um, we will move into the ARPA. And um, my, my hope is that this, this can be done as soon as possible with the ARPA money, you know? And uh, we'll, we'll have to anticipate, you know, between the commissioners, take it under advisory for a Plan B. Trustee?
Edward Anthony, in capacity today for Chairman of the Board of EMA. Uh, I hear, you know, you're saying be patient, so. I hear, you know, you're saying be patient, so it's a shame that we're really at a public forum, because we did set up a meeting with the three commissioners on Monday, one attended. So I commend Denny for attending that. We did not want to go to public forum, but now that we're here, letting you know, I know a comment was made about you're getting tired of people coming in and asking for money. You know, we're not asking for this money. We, over the years, and I've been there for 12 years at the EMA Board, we busted our butt, the Executive Board did, with grants, saving money, and then we have invested in that building immensely. I believe a couple of you have been down there. You've seen the realization of that, the remodeling of it. It's state of the art. Okay, so when comments made about asking money, we're not asking for any money. Actually, we got that building where we want. That's one of the top-notch buildings in the EMA, right now, Mahoning, Portage, whatever. So we were gracious enough as a board when you came to us and Director Hickey, to give you space in that building and compound. Because we knew the situation you guys were at. But we also were hesitant about that, because it's turned out to be exactly what our fears were, that it's not temporary. The old board, and I know there's two new members here, and I know that doesn't have no reflection on you, told us at the very latest, at the very latest, May of 2025, but they were looking at March of 2025. Yes, we've been patient, but it's to a point now, the Executive Board, which runs the EMA, wants a plan in place. Now, what if this money is not allowed to be appropriated from the balance of the command vehicle? What what's your plan? Because we cannot continue. It's a health hazard. It's an inconvenience. It's a crisis hazard. We've already heard from the Association of the Fire Chiefs, if there's a crisis that occur right now, we need that building. We need all of that building. And as far as the smell, yes, Commissioner Bernard, there has been some good things that were aired out there. It's still a bad smell. It's unprofessional. We have people come in all over at meetings. It's unprofessional to have them subject to that. And it's unprofessional to have our director go down three to four hours every time we have a meeting to air it out. So as a Chairman of the Board, our patience is wearing thin. What's your plan? We don't want the 300 and some thousand. You want to leave us where we're at? Leave us where we're at. We're very, very, very content being there. You're going to have to do something with the coroner's office. You're going to have to make a move. And you're saying be patient, be patient. Well, you know, how much more patience do you want? Because I can tell you right now, if that money don't come through, what is your next plan? Because we can't continue down this avenue. Can't.
Well, well, my plan is, you know what? We had a budget meeting yesterday and, you know, we need another million dollars for the county to operate, all right? And I and I'm not going to lay off county employees right now, okay, to fund you to move that, okay? Okay, we're trying to move it.
Fund us. Fund us for what? We're not asking for money.
Well, i- if we move you to the old the old fire station out at the fairgrounds, okay? That's going to cost dollars to do that. We have to make sure we have enough dollars to do that, okay? All right, and that's what we're in the process of doing, okay? That this situation was handed to Commissioner Hernandez and myself. We're, we are trying to take action to correct it, maybe not at as expedient that you want, but we are trying to do it. And we're trying to do some things behind the scenes, okay, so we can fund it, so we don't put it, so we don't have to borrow more money, all right? And and so we don't have to raise people's taxes to do it. We are trying to work towards that goal, you know? We're just not doing it at your speed.
But we didn't ask for this.
And I didn't ask for it either.
Okay, but we did not, as an EMA Board, ask for this.
Well, I I didn't either, and and I didn't okay to move, you okayed to move, and the commissioner's okayed to move the passport. I didn't okay it. I'm I'm trying, I'm trying to help you out.
Okay.
Okay, but we, trustee, we're going to take this under advisory. We we will discuss Plan B for sure. But our, you know, at this point, we're hoping that those dollars do transfer to, you know, the ARPA monies will transfer. And hopefully, our prayers will be answered, and they will. If not, then yes, the commissioners will be in discussion about Plan B.
Okay, I appreciate it.
All right.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. Auditor Yoder.
Martha Yoder, Trumbull County Auditor. I neglected to explain something to you yesterday, because I was pretty focused on the budget, but I have an update on the Shepherd of the Valley situation that's been discussed over the last couple of weeks. The city of Salem has agreed to serve as the issuer. So there's no decision on your part that needs to be made. However, I do want to let you know that it's my understanding that a TFR hearing will still be necessary, because part of the debt that they're refinancing is for a debt on the facility in Trumbull County. The Bond Council will be in touch with the clerk if they have not already done so for this process.
Okay, thank you, auditor. Very good. That's that's good news. We're glad that they were able to move forward with that, and we believe that Columbiana County actually would have been the best source for that. Sheriff.
Sheriff Wilson, Trumbull County Sheriff Office. I'm also on the EMA Board, and I think these guys, people on the Board have done a great job. And I want them to know openly that the holdup isn't because of the garage that we needed to store our equipment in. And I am a team player, and we're looking for alternative places to put our equipment. I understand the commissioners don't have the money to move anybody or build us another facility. This started before I became sheriff, and the specs were laid out to our deputies that were in charge of Marine Patrol and Dive Team, that equipment's out there. There's two boats, a pickup truck, a dive team trailer. That they need to be secured with restricted access in a place where the equipment won't rot on a gravel driveway. The biggest problem we have is it's law enforcement equipment that people should not be able to have access to. So any alternative garages, other than the one that was proposed to be built for 336,000, is a great opportunity to improve and assist this move, which I'm going to contact these engineer to find out if we can do something with the garage bay that they have. But the specs that were brought up about the building that needed to be built, you know, Director Hickey measured with one of our sergeants, and we had no real involvement, and John contracted the the engineering company, and he got the specs and the quote for 336,000, which I did tell him it was crazy to pay that kind of money for a building like that. So I want you to know I'm on board and team player, and we're trying to do what we can to do this without any substantial costs and move our equipment out. We don't absolutely have to have a garage built, but there will be some money involved in making a garage bay that's available, able to fit our our needs for that secured access and climate control and a cement or paved portion of a floor, so that we have access to the equipment, no one else does, and it it doesn't rot, because we know we can't afford new equipment. I actually was texting with Director Hickey Monday and talked about the specs to the garage, and we were on the same page that there was no money to move. And I asked him if he wanted me to come out Monday to meet with him and talk about this. And he said, no, there was no need to meet, but I'm unders, you know, understanding that there was a board meeting Monday? Was there a board meeting Monday? EMA Board? So I'm on the board. I did not get invited to that meeting. Why?
Trustee Anthony, can you please come up up here and just, so we could get get you next to Sheriff and
Collaborating with your garage, with your building, which you want, but it really are concerned right now is the EMA building itself, so posed you our our whole thing on this is, had a building, we brought it up, we remodeled, we did everything else. Now we have now got the corner to go there. Happy with the situation also, so really a concern is with the they're content to where we're at, we're not at, just let us along. Have to deal with the coroner's office. You have your issues as far as securing your vehicle all these years. I know how you're going. I don't our issue of it is, our building was fine for all these years, and now all of a sudden, because we let somebody use now this brought upon us. We didn't have a problem for all
My my question is that I'm a board member. I have a position on the board. I wasn't invited to the board meeting. Well, I think I should be informed.
If if Chief, if if you would speak, if just give your name again up here and
I'm not trying to try to cause any problems.
No, no, we understand, Sheriff. You're on the board, so.
Position is, I'm on that board. I make the vote, also vote on that board, and I'm 100% for the move and what the board does and what EMA stands for. And I'm a team player, and I'm just want to be on the team.
Chief.
Chief Kevin Kier, I'm Nick, Trumbull County Hazmat. Sheriff, this was discussed at the last EMA Executive Board meeting. Unfortunately, you weren't able to attend.
I was out of town.
Right, and did not have a representative there. As for going beyond that, I didn't extend the invitations, but I do know that it was discussed at the previous board meeting and available to go to the small meeting. We didn't want to load the room. We didn't want to load the room today. So I was just trying to keep it on a especially personal, small group, let's talk about it platform.
I understand. I think an email should have went out at least saying we're having a meeting with certain members. But anyway, I'm for the Board, EMA Board, to do what they need to do to take care of their issues. I'm 100% for the move, if we can fund it, 100% to move our equipment out of the garage there as soon as we find a viable solution. Thank you.
As, thank you, Sheriff, as we all are, and I I don't think we disagree with that. Anyone else under public comment on this issue? And we just want to thank the Chiefs for coming and, you know, voicing your opinions on this subject matter. Again, we will take this all under advisory, and we are we are hoping that the 300,000 will transfer. If it doesn't, then we absolutely will have to discuss a Plan B to get you get you moved and get EMA out of there. But again, we appreciate, we appreciate you taking your time for coming today. And we're still under public comment? Mike Selman?
Mike, Mike Selman, Trumbull County Transit Administrator. First, I want to thank you for passing the two agenda items today. I just want to give you two two quick updates I wanted to give you yesterday. Regarding the tar, the ODOT 5310 tar review, I received the final, a final review. However, it didn't look like it was copied to three of you, so I would be glad to send that to you, because during the meeting process, it was supposed to be also sent to you, the three of you. So I will be sending the review to you, so you'll see what I'll be working on.
Okay.
The other thing is, the ODOT application grant period opened today, and that will be open until November 14th. I'll be coming back to this board, because there's several items that need to be approved by the commissioners, like in a resolution, for example, which we've worked on before. So just want to give you two updates. Thank you.
Great. Okay, thank you, Mike. Okay, we're still under public comment? Commissioner, if there's no additional comments, we are executive session?
Okay, Commissioner, I'd like to make a motion that we enter an executive session pursuant to ORC 12122G1 to consider the appointment, employment, dismissal, discipline, promotion, demotion, or compensation of a public employee or official, or the investigation of charges or complaints against a public employee, official, licensee, or regulated individual, unless a public employee, official, licensee, or regulated individual requests public hearing.
Back on the motion.
Mr. Malloy?
Yes.
Mr. Bernard?
Yes.
Mr. Hernandez?
Yes.
Okay, Gary? Okay, Gary?
Oh. Mr. Sure? We're on.
Okay, Mr. Chairman. I'd like to make a motion to reconvene from executive session pursuant to ORC 12122G1 to consider the appointment, employment, dismissal, discipline, promotion, demotion, or compensation of a public employee or official for the investigation of charges or complaints against a public employee, official licensee, or regulated individual, unless the public employee, official licensee, or regulated individual requests public hearing.
Second motion?
Mr. Malloy?
Yes.
Mr. Bernard?
Yes.
Mr. Hernandez?
Yes. Okay, so we're on.
To make a motion, we adjourn.
Are you sure?
Positive.
Second motion?
Mr. Malloy?
Yes.
Mr. Bernard?
Yes.
Mr. Hernandez?
Yes. Okay. That concludes the meeting.